So for a little context, while that's coming up on May 20th, we all met at the council retreat or workshop, whatever you want to call it, talked about a number of different things, but how how the new council is going to work together. What what are expectations? We also talked about in my request, what are the new councils priorities for the coming couple of years? We all will have potentially a different council in 2024. So I'm just going to go out ahead and say, for the rest of 22, 23, and the early part of 24, what what is it that the council wants to accomplish kind of at a higher level? And the way we had that conversation, I spoke with our facilitator Kathy Novak, and she also spoke with each of you and went through a matrix I put together for all of you going through 12 different policy areas, if you will, and asked what would be the council's priorities for for this timeframe? So with that, I should probably have control this. I don't. Real briefly, this is what we're going to do. Why do we have priorities? I'll go a little bit more into detail about what we did at the retreat. And then we'll we'll go over how we want to go forward. So and if anybody has questions or comments, by all means, please interrupt me. This this is really dialogue. It's a workshop. Really informal and won't be asking for formal action tonight, maybe at all, but we'll keep it real real loose for tonight. So what why are we doing priorities tonight? One of the reasons we're doing it tonight is because we have a pretty full agenda looking through the rest of the summer. And I didn't want MASH to grow under this, as it were. It's been a month and a half since we talked about priorities. Didn't want it to slide too much further. We wanted to have at the council's request at the retreat, we want to have an open public dialogue. Basically, a similar conversation here for the community. We I am hoping to distill these priority kind of high level areas into goals and action items, perhaps. I have 2023 on there, but through 2024. A lot of cities do full on strategic plans. I have some ambivalence personally about strategic plans. It's a lot of work. A lot of times it's a lot of staff time and a lot of money. We have a what I think is a pretty decent framework with our existing 2019 through 2022 strategic plan. What I propose is really building on that and kind of refreshing that same framework. I'm hoping to get consensus on some of these key areas. Most importantly, so we as your staff, we know where to focus our efforts and resources. And to help the council kind of process through this, I'd encourage you to think about desired outcomes. What? Don't don't think about necessarily the the specific resources that go into it, or even necessarily a specific objective in and of itself. But what is it really going to do for the community? How is it going to move the needle? How are we going to make life better for our residents? So think about that in terms of projects and tangible things, processes we have in place and the program the city program to see provides. What wire priorities important helps you all express a unified vision for for our shared community that also captures values, hopes and needs. It sends a very tangible signal to the folks you represent that you're hearing them and you have something written on paper that says, we hear you. This is what we're going to do about it. For us, it creates a north star is kind of a trendy way to put it, with which to align our limited city resources, staff time, budgets, our materials. And it really helps us in terms of what are we going to be spending our time on besides day to day operations strategically? What do we need to be improving for the next couple of years? And then a little more detail, but very much important to us. I promised you a better budget document when you hired me. Having a better budget document incorporates performance and putting money towards your goals and priorities. We can use a budget to demonstrate how we're doing that to be the best budget document we can be, is the word way to put it. But to have the best budget we can, we need to have some priorities with which to line our resources. And that way we can measure our progress towards those priorities. Excellent. Very briefly, we, as I mentioned, we do have something of a framework that we're working off of. This is a little bit on the older side by now from three years ago. There was also five priority areas, as it turns out, and 12 different areas of focus within those those five areas in a total of 27 things to do, actual actions to take to carry out that strategic plan. You see the priorities listed there, safety, security, economic development, fiscal sustainability, infrastructure, workforce. I don't have time tonight to go into how we're doing on all those. A lot of them we've completed. Several of them are in progress. Some of them have not been completed and some are not quite as relevant in a post COVID world with a few other things going on as well. If you want to hear more about that in the future, we can certainly talk about that. And just for a little bit more context, usually when you talk about priorities, strategy and stuff like that, when we look at mission vision. For those who are not familiar with it, who don't have it memorized, if not, that's okay. I understand. I don't either. Here's our our vision. It's it's a little bit on the wordy side, but I think it really touches on the the important points that we are a safe, welcoming mountain community. We have high standards. We emphasize our multi generational, family friendly aspect of our community. We want a healthy, prosperous economy with world class services and sustainable infrastructure. So and then the mission, we are protecting, promoting and enhancing general well being of our folks and our community through a commitment to excellence and emphasizing public trust, always proving public trust. So just additional context, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we had the retreat on May 20th that was facilitated by Kathy Novak, who is an expert in having these sorts of conversations. I shared with you all and with our staff as well, a matrix of potential priority areas that we've been talking with our staff and talking with you, talking with residents, came up with just kind of a working list to put that matrix together. And those priority areas, I initially called them categories, kind of policy categories. We'll show them here on the next slide. But again, high level policy areas, just to get the juices flowing and work through those. And my my take on it was you all were generally okay with those 12 areas. There wasn't really anything we missed. I've made a few tweaks to that initial list, but then we moved forward with it. As you will recall, the facilitator for the retreat discussed those priorities with each of you. And she was tallying which of those items drew interest from at least three of you. And so we we had a fairly robust dialogue at the retreat and we came up with five of those 12 potential areas as being priorities for you all. In addition to those five priority areas, there is a footnote that one of you mentioned, what about negative priorities? What happens if, you know, the the economy falls out again? And we have to start cutting stuff. Is that is that something that should be worked into this? And I would say that's really more right for a budget conversation. Certainly, we're going to respond if the economy tanks and revenues start going backwards. Priorities are still priorities at this point, but then we talk about how what do you want to stop doing or do less of? Maybe it's priorities, maybe it's other operations. And so that's that's a conversation we'd certainly have at any time. But this is more aspirational. We like to use that word. Something that should always stand, no matter how many resources that you have. If you have a dollar, if you have $100, hopefully, your priorities are still your priorities, with maybe a few exceptions. So I did want to address that, though. We we did hear that. So Rob, if you can move forward, thank you. And I put the colors on here because the original matrix had colors and highlight colors and it helps people remember stuff. So they are consistent. I looked for that. It's there we go. We're we're in July. We we have stars to note the areas that were priorities. We're tying all together here, folks. And so we had fiscal responsibility. These this might be hard to see for some folks. Fiscal responsibility, public safety, transportation, staffing, parks and recreation, water slash utilities, housing, economic development, technology, community character, intergovernmental leadership and general management. Kathy Novak, our facilitator at the retreat spoke with each of you, and we seem to focus in, I said, five areas. You'll see six stars here. I combined transportation and water and utilities, just the way our organization is structured. That makes sense. And so we'll we'll focus from here on out on those five or six areas. We'll develop those in here in just a minute. But any any questions on these before I go into the individual areas?
Yeah, Michael, you said that the areas that you have starred there are the only areas that three council members are more agreed on.
I I believe that's that's how it went. That's what I walked away from. In in my next statement is going to be that this can change too. If there, you know, that that was a month and a half ago. If in the month and a half that's elapsed, things have changed. If you want to look at something else instead, add to it, that's absolutely fine. So this this is maybe your opportunity to do that. I won't show all 12 areas again. But this week, Kathy, the facilitator brought up these areas that had the most interest and the rest we just kind of set aside. And so my
Michael, yes, I want to piggyback on David's councilman, no, work session, David's comment. Where would you put? Because evidently, three council members or not even two council members agreed on a couple of things that I had offered up. I I don't know where they would fall in. The two that I had offered up and never showed up on any charts was fixing zoning because municipal code is very broken and it's leading to a lot of legal quasi judicial that we're going to hear tonight and in the future because of how poorly it's written. We paid $100,000 to get two products. We've gotten the first, but we haven't gotten the second one. So I don't want that to fall off the radar scope. I think a lot of citizens would like to see that fixed. And the second is budget and finances. Where where were those priorities? And I know two council members voiced these two. So evidently, we didn't have a third, but where would they fall in in these 12 or four or five?
And we, I mean, we can add. And I'd like to hear a little bit more about each of those. I think you made the zone budget finance. It's a very broad area. I would presume to put that under fiscal responsibility. We would elevate that. But I mean, that's that's part of the reason why I'm having this conversation tonight is that, you know, there was only two people that brought it up. Those those were Kathy's rules that we, you know, we didn't set that. I didn't set that. We we can certainly talk more about it.
Okay, let's just hold off then. I just wanted to make sure everybody here because we didn't actually have an opportunity to list off each individual what we did. We kind of worked as a group. These were distilled or the summary. And it's, I think, very correct, but I do know that that I've spoken with one other council member and had some similar concerns about some of the priorities.
So so maybe we could add a bullet under A, which is the blue fiscal responsibility. Because in actuality, the budget and finances really flows throughout all of these areas.
We're good.
Right?
For the record, that that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question because I thought fiscal responsibility was probably a top concern that would, you know, in broad scale across all of these things, and it should be taken into consideration. So I figure that might be a pretty, pretty high priority for us.
So yeah, we can certainly talk more about that. Not honestly, I was a little surprised that that didn't explicitly come up. I, you know, we we talk all the time about fiscal responsibility. So is it is it the air we breathe? Or is it is it something that needs to be addressed explicitly? We we hold on to that. Let's put a pin in it and we'll 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 come back to that because let's develop that for sure. In going forward, I have the five areas. We'll talk about the sixth and possibly zoning here too. But if these are areas that continue to be a priority for you all, I would be looking for a confirmation of such. If there's, I'll have some specific objectives that I heard on here. If those are consistent with what a consensus of you would like, we will just move forward with that. If there's something else that's missing, I'd like to hear about that as well. If there's something that really needs to be taken off of there. That's good too. That's all all what we're looking for here. My hope in going through this next part is to bring back some kind of single statement that you all provided consensus on. I'd like to have a formal motion from you all to adopt it. It is just a motion. If you all would rather not do something formal, we can do that too. I'm trying to get to a consensus on these with a formal affirmation or not.
So just ask one more question then on in the priority areas before we make those a focus. In your, for example, water utilities, that's a priority area. But what does that mean? What is the what? Does it mean we're after more water shares? Does it mean we're after upgrading infrastructure? Why is that a priority area? Like, what what does it mean to everyone?
Well, I'll just chime in because I dug out my notes, my packet from the retreats.
Yeah.
This came directly out of the retreat. And there are bullets in each of these areas. And I think when Michael moves forward with slides, you'll see that.
Okay.
There were more definitive goals, I would say, within each of those areas that we identified and put bullets on in this matrix that we
Kelly, can you refresh my memory? Because I I should have brought that and I forgot.
Would you like a copy?
I have two. If you have, if we could get it.
I'll send one down.
Does municipal code fall into the housing in bullets here? Could it?
It actually falls in a lot of areas, but I would say that that probably is the primary portion of the zoning that we would look at. And that was the biggest concern. Wouldn't you agree?
Fiscal responsibility.
Good question. So we're going to help ourselves.
So I'm guessing you're going to cover this.
I'll go through the the areas with the stars. I'm not planning going through the areas without, although we can revisit them. All right. So and then Councilmember Zuluwaga had a good question, if he doesn't mind me sharing. He asked, why would technology be standing on its own rather than under general management? And that's a very good question. The reason being, technology, a lot of times is just kind of a means to an end. It's a tool to do what we already do. But sometimes it's at such a scale that it's a policy conversation. When I like, when I say general management, that's more about how does the city run internally? What do the operations look like? When I say technology in this context, it's bigger policy level issues like, does the city want to do more with smart city technology? That's a whole other conversation with a smart city. I don't want to get into it too much here, but it's also municipal fiber. That's a that's a whole big policy question we're currently working through. And that's not necessarily pertaining to our internal day to day operations, if that makes sense. So that's why I have them separate. Okay, come to the next one. There we go. Thank you, sir. So one of the areas that we've perhaps heard most about is the area of staffing and what what can we do to attract, retain, bro, set staff, make staff work better, make staff work more efficiently, whatever it is. These were some of the what I'm going to call objectives. Some of them are more goals, but these are what I heard leading up to that conversation on May 20th. That's where these came from. It's carrying it from our staff, hearing it from you all, hearing it from residents. This was something I put together. And so it's, we we talked through some of these briefly. Some of these were added by you all at the retreat, and then we're not on my original list. But in this example, if there's something on here that, you know, it doesn't really make sense. Maybe we don't ever see need more, ever needing more staff. Okay, that's fine. Or maybe there's something else you want to add on here too. That's the conversation I I'd like to get into. So.
On, oh, go ahead. On that point, there's an area that I think that's really surfaced since COVID, and that is the loss of institutional memory. And the fact that we've got people who don't know where certain valves are to turn off, and we have people who don't know. They just don't know because people have left. So I think if you're looking at staffing, you're also looking at. And that's why I kind of asked you about the the technology and and general management. I think to me, that's a really key part of us keeping the integrity of our city impact intact. I I think that's almost a perfect, Kelly, if it's okay. I think that's kind of a perfect intro to my thoughts. I think general management of the staff is a priority. And maybe you're hearing from a different demographic because from the constituents that we represent, I haven't heard peep from them that staffing is a concern. I think we know the internal workings better than the citizens do. So I think the city council may have a better handle on the staffing and why it may be a priority. I don't think the citizens have said two words about staffing because it's invisible to them. So I just want to
Go ahead. I just have something to add to it.
Okay, I I think we need to be careful in our words here on how high this is in the priority. You stated that this is the, you've heard it the most and it's number one priority, basically, in your mind. I'm not sure the citizens would say it is the number one priority from what I've just my opinion and Kelly.
Captain, go ahead. So you have something to say. So I don't necessarily disagree, but you can roll it back into the things I've heard is our streets suck. You know, everything. So they are actually complaining about staffing. They just don't know that they're complaining about staffing. Right? So they really are.
That is a good point.
So, yeah. And and some service level issues and the inability to hire for quite some time. And so the repercussions of that, that the citizens actually see, feel here are response for service for the police, maybe. The streets, I heard it again today or last night at the meeting about the short term rental roundtables about how the all the streets and the condition that they're in and that it has been that way for a while and they continue to erode. And and not to say that it's all staffing, but that's what how they see the issues, not necessarily the actual people get the compensation and those kinds of things. Because that's too close for them to really know. Unless they ask, of course.
So, yeah, and I if and I I would, I would echo that, that it's, it may not be direct. It's not like, oh, you're you're underpaying your staff, not not too many taxpayers say that too often anywhere. I can understand that certainly. But in our budget, like many of the organizations you've worked for, the vast majority of our budget is people and we are a service organization. There's no, there's no people, there's no service, there's no point in having an organization. So, you know, and we'll we'll talk about staff compensation a little bit later this evening. But we we don't, we don't offer a whole lot. We don't make widgets. I've mentioned this in the past. And the the other thing I would mention is, I, you know, I'm not the council member. I'm not elected. I have heard quite a bit of feedback directly from residents, directly from several businesses. Certainly from any of you that this is an area that needs some focus. And so that that is why I would put this on here. When I took my notes from the retreat, this was, I had this as the first one that came up. And I can't remember why that was. If it was the most burning issue, or if that was just the way the facilitator had it, I don't know. But this was the first one that we have listed. So.
And it would make sense that you would hear it first if somebody was complaining about my street hasn't been cleared or any service falters, you'd get the call. We would. So maybe that's why.
I hope not. That would be great. That's why we want it.
Another area is snow plowing during the winter, although we didn't have a big winter. We had department heads. Kip was driving the snowplow. We had some previous employees come back that have retired and drive for us. Although they they didn't really notice a decline in service because we backfilled as we could. But that's another area where they're really picky about. And they call, when there's a snowstorm, the front desk rings off the so anyway, just another thought.
No offense, Rusty, you can come in City Hall on any of those days and take those phone calls. You'll hear plenty. Just forward them to me. Just route those calls forward. I couldn't resist, sorry.
You gonna do that? Let the chief give an give an hour to the chief, thanks. Sit there and answer them calls.
You don't understand. I know how to forward this on to you.
So. So I mean, this, this is pretty black and white. And we we can discuss any one of these if you want. Something to note is that the fifth item, excuse me, was something that I did not initially hear. I've I've heard from one council member. We did, I believe this was added to the list. Whatever that means, it's on here to identify areas where additional staff is most needed. That's not hard for our organization. But that's, that's something we we do very often through the budget process. If council wanted something more on that, and we could do that. At the end of all this, we as staff have to come back and figure out how to distill this down into a final document. Still have to work on that, but depending on what we do here tonight. But is there, is there anything else on here? Number number six was also added at the retreat, tools to do the job. I would say that's not necessarily just hammers and wrenches and stuff like that, but heavy equipment, software. Help me out, gang. What else? Your your stuff?
I'm just really excited about hearing the discussion because there are some excellent technologies, some asset management softwares that are very powerful tools that address some of the concerns council members Zuluwaga discussed about having robust GIS infrastructure that's inspected and it becomes our ultimate system of record. It also allows staff to help manage crews and and assign work. And from all those metrics, you can then start to define level of service standards, which is something the citizens directly see. And so just as kind of a pre plug, I think, having a very robust and maintained asset management software in future will be something that will address a lot of these concerns that at least we've heard discussed.
I just echo on that, Michael, that one of the things that I think, and I've said it before, a lot of things people would side up in rewarding employees for a job well done is a compensation package, not just salary. And there's components to that other than the money in benefits, in tools to do the job and making their job an experience that's not dreaded. So just keep that in mind. It's not always just salary. Thank you.
When we have the top hands that have all the knowledge, are we downloading all that knowledge for the next generation? For like our water department utilities, important stuff that we got to have day in day.
Well, that that's an excellent question. I I'm not sure I have a silver bullet answer for you.
No, no, I just, we are thinking of those lines, right? And that what we've been talking about previously. So I just want to make sure that was.
Right. Well, and and Ben was right on point when he's talking about an asset management system. We we had the misfortune of losing one of our most seasoned employees. He passed back in February. And he was our asset management system. When he passed, we found out very quickly that he carried a lot of very valuable knowledge. And so the NASA management system really is our best attempt at replacing that knowledge and getting it down so that anybody can use it. It can stand the test of time. And so I I think, I think there's going to be a number of smaller solutions like an asset management software, like a budgeting system software, perhaps at some point, something that's going to give us longer records that are not locked up in dusty binders. Having people stay long enough so that we can have them learn. It takes many months to learn most of our jobs. Some of us never stop learning and we don't get a hang of it all that quickly. So that that's part of it as well is that training, building a deeper bench. So people stay here and invest their careers with us is, I think, one of the most effective ways to do that.
Succession plan and keeping people long enough to implement a succession.
Correct. Correct. And so and we, you know, we we can talk a little bit more about that. I just say that we've we've taken the I just say that we've we've taken the first step in employee retention and looking at the compensation stage. As I've shared with you on previous occasions. Employee development and employee training is part of keeping people around for a long time, helping them grow. Attain mastery, autonomy, and purpose in their jobs are things we're trying to build into it. Having career progression options for employees is a huge thing that aids retention. That's something that we're pivoting to. We've done that in some places already. But having citywide progression opportunities for employees to climb that ladder, think about staying. That's something we'll be working on the second half of this year as well. It 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 takes all different disciplines to get it done. But it so I I mean, we can, we have five of these areas. It sounds like we want to develop maybe a sixth and seventh one, two. We have probably another forty, forty-five minutes or so. If we we can always bring this back for further conversation if you want, if you want to go through each of these, we can try. My suggestion would be if there's one of these that gives you heartburn, let's talk about it. If there's something you want to add, let's talk about that. Otherwise, we'll move forward with what's on here and we'll we'll work on putting that into a document, a finalized document for you all to yay or nay, give consensus on.
You know, I just to reiterate, Rusty, what you gave me kudos for is I think naturally item A fiscal responsibility is going to flow through each of these. And I think that we'll address that with each item that we talked about or that we give this priority to. Because nine times out of ten, it's going to have a fiscal impact. And so it would require funding, it would require budgeting and planning for that. Would you agree with me?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, as you were talking, I was gonna say spot on because if I remember every campaign statements or every candidate, mine, everybody here and previous council members. Every single one of us stood up and said, we are fiscal conservatives. We are fiscal conservatives, so we understand how money works and budgets and government. So yes, a hundred percent agree with you.
Rusty, that's exactly the reason why I ran the first time was to quit being a complainer and to sit up, stand up and take responsibility to be part of the solution. And we have come a very long way since that day. So we will continue to do that and and I promise you that that's always in my mind. So there you have it. Thank you.
So anything further on staffing? Before we move on to, I think, housing. Right? Going once gone. Something else that's on one hand was a little surprising to me, I'll be honest. On the other hand, not surprising in the least bit. Was this topic of housing and and Woodland Park, as we all know, this is kind of an interesting one for us, but as we just had our our short term rental roundtables last night and yesterday morning. We we are, we are getting this acute sense of housing may may kind of be an area that we want to look at as a municipality. So to that, and again, these are things that I've heard from you all, from our staff and from folks in the community. If you want to add or subtract or alter, let us know. But part of that, we we actually had a meeting just a few hours ago. Karen, Aaron, Amy, Rob and myself were talking about how might we go about this housing plan? And what a housing plan is 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 really a a first step or technically a second step maybe to understanding really what what are the challenges our community is having in housing? Let's really understand it as we talked about with with so many things here, short term rentals in particular. What's really the problem we're trying to solve? Let's articulate that first before we start going and throwing policy solutions at it. And so you all, I I asked you point blank, are you okay if we go pursue a housing needs assessment? And so what that is is exactly what it sounds like. It's pretty straightforward in this case. Where, you know, where are we deficient? What are our demographics look like? How are our housing trends shaping up right now? Is housing getting more or less affordable? I think we all know the answer to that. What kinds of people can afford housing? What kind of housing? What percentage of AMI area median income is housing available at? And so a housing needs assessment, that's something we could do in house. That's a really bad idea. But there's a lot of grant money out there to do housing needs assessment. We were talking about that very thing today. The the state government, this is one of their top policy issues. Last September, Colorado Municipal League identified this as their number one issue in terms of looking through policy solutions. So we we are fairly confident we can go get some grant money to fund a needs assessment. That's not something that we need existing appropriation for. At least that's my expectation today. Don't hold me to that. But it seemed like it was a good first step. Developing an attainable housing strategy. I I asked Karen yesterday, what's the difference between attainable housing and affordable housing? And I have a suspicion that some of you know that. So attainable housing is it's people who are making the area median income within certain standard deviations. I think we said eighty to a hundred twenty percent of area median income. They are able to afford housing. I don't know if that's rental or for sale. Affordable housing can include subsidized housing. So that's people who are well below AMI, being able to afford housing inside the municipality. And so don't throw things at me. The words I've heard from this council so far, we, let's talk about attainable housing if we're going to look at housing. It could be you all want to go down the road of affordable housing. If so, great. If not, well, that's fine too. But having more of that conversation going forward, making it very clear, because that's going to tailor how we approach housing in the future. It's it it makes a pretty big difference and that and that's fine. Not passing judgment either way. We're just wanting to start walking down that road. Consider ways to aid affordability of workforce housing. Workforce housing seems to be kind of the 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 tip of the spear on this whole housing conversation is. You know, we all know that restaurants, stores, the city itself is having a hard time hiring people. And that's it's not just Woodland Park by any means. We know that as well. But we we can't get people to work here. Part of that, I would argue, is it's hard for folks to find housing here, especially folks that are getting paid at retail and restaurant rates. So how how can we help boost workforce availability through housing, making it a little bit easier for those folks to live and stay up here? I've heard from a number of folks on this dais and out in the community, we'd really love for our cops to live here. We'd really love for our teachers to be able to live here and we like to see them in the grocery store aisles right next to us. That's part of our small town charm that we baked into our vision mission statements. I think we all live here in part because we value that closeness and that small town atmosphere. So and the number fours is kind of subsidiary to all the rest. We we certainly want to look for grants. There's a lot of grant money out there for this right now. So as with housing, if there's things to add, things to take over housing, staffing, things to add, things to take away. Things to tweak, but appreciate your thoughts on that. Okay.
Nobody's gonna say anything. I hate to be the one that's gonna be so verbose. Can we talk about zoning as a way of controlling housing? I mean, is it isn't by statute how we structure our zoning? Our zones are in our municipal code? How we establish guidance that would generate housing and then the free market fills in those zones based on supply and demand? I I don't like legislating necessarily housing plans. We we did one in twenty sixteen. It's a very good one. It's available. That is a great document. I don't see much change from what that assessment said. Where I need, it might be updated and maybe the the numbers might be tweaked a little bit. But when you look at what growth has taken place since twenty sixteen, I'm not sure it would alter any course of action that was naturally in place. Kelly, you know which document I'm talking about.
I do, and it's been so long since I was not on staff at that time and I wasn't elected until eighteen. I'm familiar with it. I've I remember hearing of it in in the meetings when it came forward. I I believe that it would require some updating because our market has changed significantly since then. From every aspect, not just high end or low end or anything, the 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 nature of our housing, the pricing course of our housing, although hey, houses that are selling today and this week are selling for less than list price. Which doesn't happen in a couple of years since pre COVID. I think it would be worth looking at that study that John did. And then maybe use that in our consideration of moving forward and what that would look like. And maybe even if if Sue's, I'm sure you have that somewhere or Karen. Maybe if the council were interested in that, maybe that could be something that we all look at.
Yeah, Michael, have you actually seen it? Um, I've literally laid eyes on it. I have not read it. Okay.
I mean, it would be interesting to.
Yeah, for everybody.
I know I would like to look at it just because I've gotten in the business.
Yeah, Kelly, did that include the housing study? Was that like looking at workforce?
Yes.
Housing, all that stuff too?
Because John was a very large and and he has just moved away. Sold his home and moved away. I believe just to the Springs, but John was a very large advocate with Habitat for Humanity. And for how are we going to work towards an attainable housing, even affordable housing? They looked into, as I remember, they looked into subsidy and and different areas like that to try and find some solution oriented recommendations for the council and for the community. I think it would be really valuable to look at for the council and even the community. And and I certainly not trying to direct by myself, but it just seems like that might be interesting and a place to start.
Yeah, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't pull it out and reacquaint ourselves with it. And that's what we can certainly provide.
How does that sound to you, Councilor? If I may, we actually specifically referenced this in our meeting earlier today. And that document can be found on the plans and maps section of the planning department's page on the city website. It's actually the first one listed under plans. It is titled Affordable Housing Needs Assessment, Teller County, October twenty sixteen. You are so good. I try as a very slim, understaffed department.
And Kelly, if you'll remember what precipitated him doing that was he was a proponent and he put the nine point one seven. The incentives, he wanted that as a ballot question. And so that precipitated that ballot question which failed.
Yes. It was one of the times we tried to amend that. And nine point one seven is actually the is no incentives for development or business, bringing businesses to to town or anything like that. The city's prohibited from inciting anything of that nature.
Other than the DDA.
The DDA and that's why they were formed because the state statutes provide for that in a DDA, whereas the city did not have that capability. So on the zoning question, I have to kind of somewhat agree with Rusty that it probably belongs in this section. Does everybody else kind of agree? So you have something to go with?
Yeah, if that's what you would like to do, we can certainly incorporate it in there. I mean, like, there's obviously a nexus between housing and zoning.
Yeah. From the retreat, I had made a note here, needs assessment grants in that section. So yeah, all of that I think is relevant.
So as far as the zoning goes, Rusty. When we get that report, that will, shouldn't that give us a baseline to start looking at? We don't really have.
Start over. I I didn't hear.
We're waiting for the for the zoning report. And once we have that, that will help us do this needs assessment and compare it to zoning and look to see if there are gaps.
When you say the zoning, you're talking about the Logan Simpson's municipal code.
Correct.
Yes, I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, right, right.
Yep.
So we can include it in here as part of that needs assessment. As you look at the new assessment, it would be comparing zoning. And what's what we've proved in the last since twenty sixteen, there's a lot of development that's going on and then kind of mixing and matching and putting those pieces together and compiling whether we need to go deeper into these other ones or whether the market is going to just solve that itself.
I and I'll defer to Karen on this too. I want to have realist, realistic expectations for that zoning code update. I don't know how prescriptive that's going to be in a policy sense when we're looking at housing. Now, I think there is possibility that you could change our code to streamline development that might make housing ever so much more affordable or less painful, but I don't know if it's going to be a again, a solution maybe for facilitating more attainable housing. And and Karen can correct me if I'm off base.
It's most of this country has struggled. Attainable housing is actually a highly complicated issue that you have this conversion of things that 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 come together that that make that very challenging. And it was probably at this point, three years ago. No, actually, no, I take that back. It was um, within the last two years, I watched a presentation by Rich Wobekind. He is one of the top economists in this state. That was talking about just the state of the economy in Colorado and he specifically addressed housing costs. And when the top guy in the state's telling you, we can't quite figure out what's driving housing costs, there was no one thing to point at. That tells you right there, the level of complexity. So some of its materials cost, some of its labor, some of its land, it all just comes together. That creates, you know, very expensive, you know, development issues.
Perfect storm.
It is kind of a perfect storm, absolutely. With regard to the zoning code review that was done by Logan Simpson. I believe it was really more structural in terms of code layout that they were doing. It was not diving into you know, reevaluating standards associated with review and development. But partly because of staffing issues, I have not had opportunity to really dive into that and get that moving for you all. So I apologize that that feels like it is languishing. And then the other thing I want to bring up, just in my short tenure here, is in Woodland Park, this can be, and every community gets to design its own future and its aesthetic. And this community really likes low density and does not like height when it comes to buildings. So those two things are actually very counter to how a lot of times you get to housing being more affordable. Developer will tell you, you get there partly through density and density comes with building height. So there's there's a much larger discussion that potentially needs to happen around that. But where that that's, I don't know if that answered your question or if I took a tangent, I apologize if I did.
No, thank you. It was good. Council is good information for me.
Kind of building, building on that. So if the the zoning code review is more structural, I'm looking at, I remember when Sally was here, she talked about there's this many left in multifamily, there's this much vacant land left here, there's this much vacant land for single family. And and so that's the part of this zoning, I think, would help for needs assessment to look at. What's the, how's that match up to density and how's that met?
What's left?
What's left? Yeah, we're really, exactly. It was like, yeah.
And there was an inventory. They did a an inventory of those issue where those places were at throughout the city. Wasn't terribly long ago, so it would be pretty relevant still, I think.
Yeah.
So anyway, Karen, thank you.
And I want to throw in a pitch as the DDA liaison. Because Frank and Catherine Catherine mentioned the DDA. I strongly hope that all council members get a chance to review the DDA's projects that we're going to have a say in that. We have a veto power. But housing is a piece of it, depending on which proposal you, you look at. So.
Thank you.
Don't, don't do this in the back.
Council, you good with housing? Can you move to the next?
Great, thank you, Council. Great conversation, really, really good. Transportation and utilities, these were initially two different areas. We combined them together. These are our categories. We can do whatever we want. If you want to add zoning to housing, cool. You want to break these up? That's fine too. I put them together because Kip Wiley handles them both. One of the things I heard. He's the man who can handle it. Water rights acquisition was one of the things we heard from you all, as we all know by now, ad nauseam. Water is gold, water is our lifeblood in this community. We don't have it, we don't grow, we die. So our, our traditional practice has not been. To, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kip, but to necessarily actively go hunt for additional water rates. When we have the opportunity to acquire them at a good price, we jump on that. We, we haven't budgeted in the past. I think we might do that in the future. But this would look like taking an active approach to finding where they're available and grabbing them. If, if the price makes sense. Reliever out, still there. I, I hear that from a lot of people, maybe more than just about anything else, period. Reservoir construction was something else that's, that's continuing to be on our radar and I've heard it from several of you as well. And then just, this is an operational thing, keep implementing the plans we currently have in place. PMP is one of the examples I gave, that is our pavement management plan. And then we have several other capital plans for our water and wastewater infrastructure. There's a few others out there as well. So I think we have a drainage, do we have a drainage plan, a few others as well. So this is a great big wide open area. You can put, fix the stupid roads, Michael, but that's one of those overarching banner priorities. But you, you can articulate that here as well if you like. We're making huge headway right now. If you've gotten in a car and driven anywhere in the past, I don't know, two or three weeks. But again, these, these are your priorities. So anything you would add, subtract, change on this.
Something I'd like to just point out that came to mind for me, Council, is that transportation and utilities both need, neither reside in the general fund. Transportation lies in four ten fund. There's a drainage fund as well that comes from a. Couple of different sources of revenue for drainage and then the utilities enterprise funds five ten and five twenty. So just keep that in mind when we talk about budget. Okay, thank you.
And what I, what I would. Add to that, or add on to that is that our public works crews who do much of this work. Are, are in the general fund now. We moved that over into the general fund to make more room in four ten of the streets fund. To actually do the projects themselves. So if you, if you wanted to add staff to better facilitate these things, we could have a conversation. You can make the argument they could be. Perhaps the general fund or in the streets improvement fund.
We have funded staff in the four ten fund before.
Yes.
And it made sense because it was the construction of long-term assets and infrastructure. So it made sense.
Yep, yep, that, that is definitely a possibility. So any, anything else on transportation utilities? All right. The next one, Rob, please. Economic development, I have a lot to say on this and we've already started working on. Almost all of this separately. This is something that we'll be bringing to you later in the summer. What is an economic development function look like? I've heard from several folks and just, just on my own volition with internal to staff, again, it's going to be a budget conversation. But there, there's a lot of need out there for these different things and they all, they're all in here together under economic development. You can make the argument they don't, really don't belong there. There's a, a, a pretty broad banner on how. How can the city take a role in doing these things? What, what is appropriate for the city to do? We've had economic development, a function in the past. As I understand, there were some challenges with that and so we're, we're reimagining that up from the ground up. And what, what we're thinking so far, and as I mentioned, we'll, we'll present it as a package to you here soon. Do some of the traditional economic development stuff, you know, business development, workforce development. Get, get money that's not here now to come here in the future so that it enriches the whole community, that sort of thing. Help the existing businesses expand and grow. It's the best way to do economic development, stuff like that. Be, be an advocate partnering with folks like the Chamber and businesses in the community. On how, how the, the city can better support in whatever way the businesses that are out there. I've heard that since day ones, as I got here, as small business drives this community forward and indeed it does. Workforce development, that kind of goes hand in hand with what we talked about earlier. Deb Miller's here in the audience, she knows all about this and she and I talk often about all sorts of really cool programs on how to do that. How, what role, if any, should the city play in helping that come to fruition? Kind of being, I see it kind of being a bridge between workforce development centers. And businesses if, if they're so inclined. Tourism strategic plan, tourism is also one, one of those. Big things that drives our economy forward. How much is, is something I'd like to understand a little bit better. But as you all know, we've done some strategic master planning. Thanks to a grant that was provided by the Colorado Tourism Office. We've wrapped up that, that first phase of that grant and we'll be presenting that to you, I think probably in about a month and a half or so. And we're, we're pursuing another grant to kind of carry that forward and develop it a little bit more too. So we'll tell you more about that. Main Street, Main Street's been in hiatus for a little bit. We've talked with the Main Street folks. We've talked with DOLA, who runs that program at the state. What, how can we best be successful for the Main Street program going forward? Our past model, Main Street is on hiatus. You could easily make the argument, there are some challenges there. So how can we make sure those, those challenges don't repeat themselves? And what role does an economic development function have in that? And then someone to kind of bring that whole thing together and make sure. Kind, kind of is the conductor to the orchestra that they're all working in, in complement to one another. So.
I would just, I would just suggest that with the Main Street role would also come the Chamber of Commerce role. I think that they would be, Debbie says no. But no, not Main Street, economic development, not on the same bullet. We'll make it bullet five and we'll make economic development director bullet six. I don't, I don't mean as a role with Main Street, as a part of the ED umbrella.
And, and if you don't mind me asking, can you, can you explore that a little bit more? Because these, these are things that city staff would be doing.
Right.
And understanding the chamber role or incorporating the chamber role.
I guess I come from maybe just an implementation as having a seat at the table.
Okay.
Because I, I, in most cities that I've been around, particularly Colorado Springs, has been successful with their chamber and their ADC. Working in concert and have done great things down there. That's what I, my vision, it's not necessarily from a staff perspective. Yeah, just as being a player.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, Michael.
Devin and I scream at each other all the time. What are you talking about?
Be nice.
All right. Is there anything else on this council? Thank you. All right. Last one from my slides. We're making decent time, how about that? Rob, if you would please. I, that's understandable. Many of our staff have had a long week. It's been a good week, but a long week. And, and, and Rob is certainly one of them. So I'll, I'll, I'll give, give them all again on this one.
Thank you, Rob.
And kudos to you, Rob, for yesterday. That's very, very well orchestrated.
Yeah.
Both sessions, from what I hear this second.
There, it, it took just about every one of these folks that you see here from staff to make that happen. And it, it was phenomenal. I was really excited. We'll, we'll talk about that more later tonight, but.
It's great.
Great job, guys. All right, so public safety. Any city that doesn't mention public safety is one of their priorities. Is going to be in big trouble really fast. So what, kind of one of the. I found the unique quirks in our, our previous strategic plan was. We had safety and security as being our overarching primary priority, strategic area. But there weren't any specific, specific objectives listed under safety and security. It's just, this is the thing we value most and then. That was it. And perhaps that's okay. Perhaps you want to develop that a little bit more. And so I, I have the footnote on here that just because the, the only, the number one item on here is fighter, fire mitigation. Doesn't mean, I, I think I can safely speak for all of you when it's like, yeah, public safety is kind of the most important thing we do. So that's, don't, don't, don't get it twisted on that. But this is fire mitigation. I've only been here for so long, the fire mitigation is not something we've really seen as being on our radar because we don't have a fire department. But as we all know now, fire is kind of a big deal. We've known that for a while. We had, we had a scare in April with the Mills Ranch Fire. We had a har- high park fire that did a lot of. Did a lot of damage in, in an isolated area, but it, it put a good scare into us and it still costs millions of dollars to the county. And ultimately the state, but we, I, I think we all understand fire mitigation now. So we have that on here. If there's additional areas, especially around police that you would want to add EMS or. Certainly, I, I think it's wholly appropriate to mention that here, even if it's just, keep emphasizing it.
Yeah, I would say I would add number two, crime prevention, you know, because I mean, that's a factor that people keep in mind. Are we a safe city? And, and a lot of that ties to crime, whether it's violent crime or, or. Yes. There are different types of crimes, but we judge our safety by what the crime rates are. So. We've got a brand new police chief who's doing a great job.
Yes.
But I think we need to stress.
Two things I think on here, one is since Chief Chris has been here, we've looked, at least as council, we've had a far more. In, insight into what's actually going on in the city. I mean, and that has never happened before. So that's been, that's a real plus for us even getting under, understanding. Fire mitigation, I think really is, you know, we used to have the school, uh, the school superintendent. Come on a quarterly basis. We used to have meetings with the county. I mean, some of those ways, meeting with the fire districts. To council, those would be helpful ways to create a dialogue. Because fire mitigation really is not our, it's not our purview. It is funded by, uh, by the fire districts. So it seems to me if we have a more of a dialogue between some of the other agencies, and that goes to your other point, which was inter. Intergovernmental leadership. To me. Having some discussion about that's going to have a more helpful perspective than actually saying, okay, it's one of. The steps we want you as staff to be putting money and time into. I think it really needs to happen at a council level. At a regional, to get a better idea of what the different pieces are happening across the county. And then if it rises to the level that it's something that staff needs to be involved in, that I think really. As a priori, this is discussing priorities for you. I think it's the police chief and what the police is doing for fire and safety. These sort of things can be helpful to have some discussions happen at a council level. And then give you direction if we see that there's something that.
So what I've been told, we, the county and, and all of us have mentioned and we're agreeing to bring those quarterly meetings. Back and from, from a council, from a board and Michael's level. To sit in and had, share those strategies and thoughts as we did in the past for many years. So I, I think that's happening.
It, it is. I, I have reached out to all the jurisdictions here in town who used to be a part of that meeting. Maybe brought in a couple others who, who are also have a voice that should go into this. I just need to schedule the meeting. It's, it's on me. I, I reached out to everyone, got a great response from all of our fellow jurisdictions. I just need to set that date. And so hopefully we'll do that next week. It's kind of slid a little bit further.
On your, where is that? Is that on the end of your list that's in the parking lot?
No, it's on, someone right next to my right hand by my computer, I promise.
Yeah.
Lights for flags.
It's just, I know Michael's list is long.
Right, lights for flags.
I didn't mean that, that you didn't prioritize it. I meant that your list is always very lengthy.
It is, but that's, that's important and everyone I've talked to has said, yes, that's a great idea. Please bring it back. And we will even be hosting the first one here in Woodland Park. So just got to find that date, like I said.
I, I, I think to Robert's point though, I, because I think fire mitigation is extremely important.
Yes.
But to Robert's point, you don't have a fire department. So we got to focus the staff on, on, you know, police department. Crime, that sort of thing. But that doesn't mean that we have to let fire mitigation go and not be a part of meetings and continue coordination. Just probably shouldn't be one of your priorities, even though we know it's very important.
And it is, we do play a role if there is a fire.
Right.
Absolutely, we do. And it, it really, that emergency.
Right, and that, and that's. And that's what I was going to mention is that, that, that's if all of you have been to, to my office and you've seen my, my whiteboard with all the to-dos and. Better education on evacuation routes absolutely plays to the role of police and, and public safety more generally. So I have fire mitigation, may, maybe you could take it up to emergency preparedness or emergency management. Maybe one of those sub priorities, if that was a thing. To Councilmember Zulu August's point, I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I, I believe Chief Lambert would say that. Uh, any, any resources he has, any budget he has for fire mitigation is very minimal. I, I don't know if he has a great deal of resources to do that. And I'm thinking about helping homeowners, for example, find ways to mitigate their properties. Is that our role? Is it not? That's certainly debatable, but what about in public spaces? So we, you know, we applied for the co-swap grant to help us mitigate our water towers and a few other things. And we, unfortunately, we didn't get that one. But do we, we will still work on that whether it's a priority or not, but. Are there other things in the community around businesses and public spaces and open space parks, for example? That we, that's our responsibility. We don't have a fire department. But many of our open space parks, for example, are right next to homes, I had one of them. And so do we, is that something we want to prioritize going forward, knowing that there, the fire department's not going to have money to do that? So do we want to think about that as ways preventative to help make sure wildfire doesn't reach through here? As an example.
Yeah, if you look at Marshall Fire up in Boulder, that was a grass fire. That if they had mowed that grass, it would never have gotten into the neighborhood. So we're responsible for those open spaces as a city, because there are parks. So I do think there is some fire mitigation that we need to do ourselves in the community, not for the citizens, but for the. Well, for the citizens, because you don't want their houses to burn, but for the whole of the community, not trying to tell somebody how to mitigate their property.
But if we're going to be doing a priority, I, I think Robert hit it and I, it didn't click on me. It's not within our jurisdiction, fire. It's the fire department.
Fire is within our jurisdiction. Fighting fires is not.
Right.
We don't have a fire department. I think that's what Robert said.
But fire mitigation is part of our safety for our city. It has nothing to do with fighting fires.
I think that emergency preparation would be a better bullet for it. Fire mitigation education might be more appropriate.
We actually do better fire mitigation.
Okay, I, counting we're on. Can we get back on track, please?
Yeah, Catherine pointed it out as a very valid bullet point because we do have. City-owned land that we're responsible for keeping it mowed. But in terms of a priority, I wouldn't make it the number one bullet under public safety. I think crime and, and. Emergency preparation, the actions you're talking about, evacuation routes and things like that, that would be higher in the list. It might be a number three bullet, but to me, since we don't have a fire department, I'm not sure I would. Think it would be the number one item list. I think. I think you were spot on.
So it, and, and if I could, this, this one's really interesting and I appreciate the dialogue on this because. This is one, because we're kind of going from a baseline of zero, at least in terms of budget and, um, current activities, current programs a city does. If, if you all wanted to prioritize better fire mitigation, like in open spaces, for example. We, we might come to you with, um, putting, purchasing equipment that's more effective. In mowing, so we can mow faster, therefore we can mow more often. So right now, as I understand, we're mowing our open space parks once a year, maybe twice a year. Um, so as an example, would we want to put more resources to making sure that grass doesn't grow as fast and stay grown over the winter? Because we're seeing winter fires now. So a- as an example, I think, I think crime prevention should probably be number one on, on public safety, certainly. But I, I think a lot of people in this community would agree that fire is, um, just as much a risk, maybe a greater risk.
And, and I think that that's a council issue, uh, because when, when you look at fire mitigation, if we don't have a fire department. We do have a responsibility for public, for safety in our community. I don't know that there's any, uh, ordinances on the books right now for fire mitigation. That requires property owners to maintain properties to reduce the fire threat. So I think that's something that council needs to look at, if we want to, we, we want to take that seriously. We probably should look at a policy and ordinances to, uh.
The, the bullet point that we walked away with in our matrix from our, our retreat worded it as wildfire planning and response. That's kind of a more broad, um, topic that maybe encompasses everything we're talking about here. Without it having the word fire. We're, we're concerned more about wildfire protection and, and readiness than we are fighting fires. Would you agree?
Of, of course, yeah.
Would, would that bullet help you all if it said something about wildfire planning and response? Because I think that's the conversation that we've been having, maybe, would you agree with that?
I think it'd be easy to make that argument.
Yeah, would that help?
I was given the emergency services as a general, because it's evacuation.
That's the other one was emergency management advisory committee.
Yeah, and then I think we do, I think if we, for us anyways, and this is maybe a little off, but. For this, for the council, we probably do need to look at what our policies are right now, ordinances are for fire mitigation. But for the staff, I mean, that wouldn't be something they would have to deal with just yet.
Does that help?
So, so I hear it, maybe replace fire mitigation with wildfire planning and response. And emergency.
Do we have a voice?
The emergency preparedness readiness is going to happen through the police department.
Yes.
And something for the chief too, you know, for, for our, if this is our public safety. Something should be up there about, you know, what to focus on in that area as well. Which he's done a great job so far, we get to see it, thanks for the emails, greatly appreciated.
Do we still have a voice on the emergency preparedness board that the county and the whole district has? With the emergency response coordinator at the county, we used to sit in on that.
Is that the LAPC you're talking about, Kelly? Where they get everybody together?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if those meetings have been happening recently, um, being that the county lost its emergency manager and deputy emergency manager. They may have been on hiatus, um, there is a new county OEM. But I, I don't know if those meetings are presumed yet.
They probably get a liaison at that for sure.
And we, we did, um, we were a very active part of that when, when that group was active, so.
Then we have that coordinated response instead of people piecing. Counsel, anything else on that that you'd like to share with the staff?
So we are almost out of time, this is my last substantive slide, I just have questions to help us direct next steps. But, um, I know we had talked, I think we maybe covered the zoning topic. Did you want to talk further about fiscal sustain or, what do we call it? Fiscal responsibility, there we go. Do we want to develop that a little bit more tonight, is that something you want to talk about later? Are you satisfied as is?
I think it's understood that we're going to, fiscal responsibility will be applied to all the things that we take into consideration anyway. So I think we'll stick with probably what we have.
Well, I'm trying to understand in everybody's mind, where debt reduction stands on the priority list. Because that's, that was huge when I ran and, and got elected. And we had an entire council that has changed over basically, that debt reduction was the mantra. The council, you know, the ballot count, that when that changed over and we had a, a half and half council, it was still debt reduction. Robert made the, the great observation during the budget review where we could actually shift some money around and pay off one of the debts completely. If we managed our dollars through this year correctly, we could actually pay off one of the two big loans in total.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that that's what we, I think Kelly touched earlier, that that's a budgetary process. And, and that already is a priority and that, and I know that for a fact, so.
It's on here, if I could share the bullets under this with you. Number one was working towards retiring Memorial Park WAC debt, the, the COPs and then the, the debt in the general fund for. The Woodland Aquatic Center, uh, an investment committee, which is something I don't support. Fund balance management and budget and finance we added tonight, Rusty.
I think his concern was it wasn't a pri- one of the top five.
The top five, and, and I, I think we came to a conclusion together that that's really flows through all of these, no matter which one we're talking about. Would you agree with that, other than the debt? But the debt, I think, is, is on the forefront of all our minds each year with, with the budget, so. Is that the consensus that you'd like?
With your words, Kelly.
Okay.
We'll have more discussion later at the actual council meeting, because we're going to be doing some monetary votes, so.
But as far as priorities for tonight. Okay, I was just sharing what we came up with at the retreat.
And it still remains a priority.
Every day.
I just don't want it to be like Michael said, it's like breathing air, you forget about that you're doing it.
Thank you, counsel, anything else, Michael?
Rob, if you could, or Sarah, if you wouldn't mind hitting the next slide, you look different, Rob.
Glasses.
That's the glasses. So, uh, I, I think that we're, we're fairly well settled on this. I would appreciate being able to bring back to you, um, a kind of a cleaned up document. Maybe something glossy, I don't know. To, to have you all give a formal motion on, is that something you would be interested in or you would?
We would have to take that to the meeting.
Yeah, no, no, not right now, not right now, not right now, no, I'm sorry, I apologize, I was unclear on that. We, we would do that later, uh, not, not tonight at all, but at a future meeting, perhaps the twenty, twenty first.
Is this something you're wanting to do before we get into the budget cycle?
That would be great, because that way we can bake it into the budget process.
Well, if that's the case, I would like to, uh, re- reiterate what Rusty's saying and say that financial response, uh, responsibility is at the very top. It's at the very top, because if we look at what we've already looked at, the amended budget items we've had this year. Any, uh, extra that we had thought might be there to carve out to pay off the Memorial Park debt is, is going and gone. And that's because other things are taking priorities, so, um, I, I don't know if that's necessarily true.
I don't agree with that statement either, I don't know that we know that.
Well, if I just looked at the trend of what we've looked at in, in, in the adjustments that we've had of what's projected, uh, uh, extra revenues at the end of the year. They have, we've allocated them in the, uh, budget appropriations. So I'm not saying that that's.
That would be.
I'm not saying that that's bad, I'm simply saying that we need to stay focused on financial responsibility at the top of it. And as we come, as we come to the end of this year, um, it's still a target to, to retire the Memorial Park debt. So as we look at these pieces, um. I, I think what Rusty's saying is, I concur.
I concur, hundred percent.
So. So I'm.
I would give consensus, Catherine just left hers with me because she had an urgent appointment, yeah, back there.
Are we going to have time for a break?
Yeah, yes.
We have seven minutes.
That's how I'm taking, that's how I'm choosing to take it, thank you, thanks, guys.
If counsel can log in before their break, it would be appreciated.
Am I logged in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first time ever. Oh, my friend, how's work?
I'm ready for vacation, two weeks, buddy, two weeks, I'll be on a ship.
Where you know, oh yeah, that's right.
You going out in New York? Maybe.